I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cedar Falls Board of Education to order. We have, I have in my possession, an affidavit of publication showing that a notice of time and place of hearing for the proposed school budget summary for fiscal year 2016-2017. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on March 28, 2016. The board will now hold a hearing. Does anyone like to make comment? Okay. Hearing none. I will also have in my possession, an affidavit of public showing that the notice of time and place of a hearing for proposed school budget amendment for fiscal year 2015-16. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on March 28, 2016. The board will now hold a hearing. Does anyone like to comment? Hearing none. I will move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is to approve our agenda. Approval of the March 21, 2016 minutes. Approval of accounts payable. The open enrollment. Approval of the weight room equipment sale. Approval of the human resources report. And the agreements. One is cooperative agreement with pre-service clinical placement with UNI. Educational service agreement with Hawkeye Community College. The area agency purchasing agreement. And the Bright Errol Digital Voice Dialer subscription. Do I have a other recommendation on the human resource report?
Yes, I've distributed an updated copy of the human resource report since the package was distributed. The district's received two more requests from teachers at the high school, Mr. Scott Hall, for the acceptance of his resignation at the end of college school year. And from an administrator, Mrs. Deborah Babbitt, associate principal at Southdale Elementary School.
You've got those two changes then on that human resource report. Do I hear a motion we accept the consent agenda?
Yes.
And a motion by Suzie, second by?
Second.
Susan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you have a public comment tonight?
We do. We have a Derrick Pisum. You can come forward and speak.
I've been a resident of Cedar Falls since 1968, aside from 12 years of honorable military service. I have one question, I just want an honest answer. Why was the bond vote brought up before this proposed property tax increase?
I don't understand your question.
The school bond vote?
Yeah.
That we just had approved. Why was it brought up before this proposed tax increase?
And this isn't a time for question and answer?
I just want an clarification of the presentation. I'm just asking for an honest answer, and I don't expect one.
Yeah, nope, I appreciate that. And again, this is something I can address with the board. It's one of those aspects, when we had our meeting on March 21st, we had about an hour-long presentation on the budget. We went through the budget, and I know even on March 22nd, the headline on the online version of the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier was "Enrollment Growth Funding Driving School Tax Increase." So this was on March 22nd. I know it was covered, it's one of those things that was in the paper, as well as something that was certainly publicized as we were going through all of our budget process and conversations that we had. So it's something that was not hidden by any means, and certainly was one of the headlines on the website. So we know it was advertised. For the board's information.
What was the date again? March what?
Twenty-second.
Any other public comment?
Nope. It was not.
Okay, we have the 2016-2017 budget to review. Any comments, Doug?
The only comment that I would have to make is that the legislature and the governor did sign supplemental state aid for the 2016-17 school year. There may be a slight adjustment that'll need to be made to our budget. If that were to affect our tax rate, the Department of Management will automatically adjust our tax rate so that it does not exceed our published amount. We won't know if that'll happen for sure or not until May, but in any event, if they do, I am notified, and then we'll make an adjustment to tax rate so it doesn't exceed what was published to us there.
Do I hear a motion that we approve, the budget is presented?
We have discussion after the motion.
Yes.
So I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education approve the proposed 2016-17 school year budget as follows. Well, according to the previous motion by board member Suzie Hines, it would be a total expenditures of $74,799,708. It would be estimated not necessary to be raised by property taxation with $22,571,394.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Susan. Now, any questions?
And again, this is just for clarification, probably in my short-term memory that doesn't remember the discussion. So our total amount rate that's going, so the increase in taxes is how much of it, coming back to how much of it is actually controllable by us versus the amount, I know we had a little bit of that discussion last time.
It's approximately 13% to 14% of the total tax rate, or the total dollars that the board would approve for next year would be controlled locally by the Board of Education. The rest of that is determined by the school funding formula, or the voters of the community voting for a certain levy, or something of that nature.
So the headline announcing our meeting here tonight and talking about the different agenda, the articles in the paper was talking about the fact that there's a 6.5, I think it was 6.5%?
The article in the paper, it's not 6.5%. The total revenue will be increasing by that amount, but if the board will recall next year is the first year we'll receive the teacher leadership compensation dollars, that's approximately $1.7 million that we've not received before. The actual property tax impact is about 2.4% to 2.5%. 2.4% to 2.5% increase.
So 2.4% to 2.5%. And then of that 2.4% to 2.5%, about 13% of that is actually?
13% to 14% would be actually what the board would be able to control.
Is it what we can control, the other is just what Des Moines sends us, and it goes into their great formula, and we?
Again, it's a combination of levies that the community has voted on and approved, or the school funding formula which predetermines that tax rate.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving this budget for 2016-2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we have then before us the approval of an amendment to 2015-16 school budget. Do you want to?
I'll just remind the board again that we're asking the board to adjust our expenditures for instruction. We have to report our expenditures in four different categories at the end of every year to the Department of Education, and that's what we establish our budget on. And because of increased enrollment, and we need to hire additional staff due to our enrollment increase in this year, we're asking for that relatively small amount of increase in expenditures. We are not asking for any increase in taxation from anybody. We're going to use our reserves that we currently have on hand to cover those additional expenses for this school.
Do you want to hear a motion to that effect?
I need that the Cedar Falls Board of Education approve the amendment of the 2015-2016 budget year expenditures as follows, for instruction, $37,174,144, and moving it to And this amount is for additional staffing and equipment due to increasing enrollment.
Thank you. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Suzie. Any questions to that effect? Hearing none. All in favor of amending the 2015-16 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're ready for the secretary's financial reports. Mr. Neffster.
Let's get the right one up, Doug. Thank you for approval of the budget and the amendment for this year. That'll help us a lot, thank you. Up on the screen and in your packet, we have the financial report for the end of March of 2016. You can see, let me get it up to the top here. There we go. In the general fund, we had total revenue of the month of $4,588,119, with expenditures for the month of $4,817,465. We're in any fund balance of $7,949,570 rounded. And then you can see there where the dollars are at, we've got a little over $583,000 in the checkbook, and the rest is in various investment accounts. In comparison to last year, you can see that we are down approximately a half a million dollars cash balance from where we were one year ago. Again, that ties right back to increased costs because of more students and more staff.
So the budget amendment that we just approved, is that that $500,000, or is that an additional $500,000 to the general fund?
You're looking, you're talking about a cash balance versus a budget balance?
Right.
So when you look at operating expenditures, that $14,711, oh, excuse me, the $52,500,000, that's the number that will now be adjusted next year.
Okay.
The $14 million is what's?
So it will play out, so our gap. So I guess, stating it a different way, our gap because of this budget change is going to widen a little bit as far as?
Correct.
As of the last year.
Correct.
We're one million behind right now, or half a million, sorry, behind, and it'll widen.
And the graph here kind of shows that as well. The blue bar is our cash position, and you can see that our cash position is approximately the same spot where we were in fiscal 2013. So, but that again is a direct result of, as we talked at the meeting last month about increased costs, and the Department of Education giving us the authority to spend the dollars but not the cash to cover. And then there's again, the management fund real quickly, and you can see that's running very, very close to where it was a year ago, and that's a planned drawdown, so we're running right on line with that. And the statewide once-in-sales tax, you can see $331,902 for the month, $4,495 out, plus another $252,673 that's transferred to the debt service fund for our revenue bond debt obligation. So we end up with a balance as of March 31st of $9,039,965. You can see what we have for cash in the checkbook, and then what's invested in various investment instruments. Please note, and you can, in the box, what is restricted, and that's the amount that we're required to hold back in order to satisfy the bondholders that hold the bonds on our revenue bonds, and then the unrestricted amount, which is available to the board as they see fit, although we are planning on using those dollars now in conjunction with the recent approval in the community of the bond sale that helps cover that $8 million gap between the $40 million we budgeted for the project and the $32 that the community has approved. And the physical plant and equipment levy of $75,037 in, $54,047 out. So you can see our fund balance is $2,335,807.50. And you can see what that comparison is from a year ago. We're about $110,000 different from where we were a year ago. Debt service, there's the $252,673 that's transferred into the debt service, plus another $730 in interest, and so you can see the any fund balance of $1,775,981 in comparison to where we were a year ago. I remind the board that we make our second debt payment, debt service payment on June 1. And so when you see the June 30th report, that will pretty much be a zero, because then we start all over again. Maybe a little residual interest in June, but it'll pretty much be flushed out to zero. Student activity account, $83,234 in, $146,792 out. So a balance of 70,020 in round numbers. And in food service, $241,632 in, $196,184 out. A balance of 575,644. This is making the school business official happy. And we are starting, we have an official trend now with food service fund balance that's starting to move back up, and it's a very positive thing to see. And I can't thank our food service team enough for continuing to meet the requirements of both state and USDA for meals that we serve our children, but yet maintain, movies and a more of a positive fund balance ratio. That's a real positive thing. Students coffee shop fund, you can see there that the $1790 in, $1973 out, so that's running pretty normal, what they do on any other month. They've got a little over $6,067 in the checkbook. And with that, I would entertain any other questions that the board would have.
Hearing none. The secretary of financial reports will be placed on file for audit.
Thank you.
Communications, we have a student board member, Michael Flanchin.
So for Student Center, we have our final three events. This Saturday, the Tiger Trot 5K at Viper Park at 8:00 AM. And then on May 4th, our staff appreciation breakfast, and we're going with a Star Wars theme, you know, may the fourth be with you. We're taking advantage of that date, and we're going to throw that in for our little celebration. And then May 11th is our blood drive at the high school. This past week, the Iowa Jazz championships were held in Des Moines, and Cedar Falls had 18 musicians represented there. And in sports, this past weekend, we had victories, men's track came out on top at the Allenworth Relays in Iowa City. And then women's soccer and women's tennis both had victories over Cedar Rapids Xavier in their competitions. And then our countdown to graduation is at 27 days, so that is fast approaching and on everyone's mind right now. So that'll be nice. Short report of this.
And all this tennis is outside?
Yes. No, we still play. It's the coldest season in the past, how many, four years I guess I've played, so.
Congratulations on your college choice.
Thank you.
It's going to Iowa State.
Did you decide, well, I saw you down there, we ran into each other. Casey was doing this, this at the same age Michael was, so good. Congratulations.
Very excited about that.
So how many more meetings do you have left? Two again? Will you?
I think so, I'll go till the very end, so.
On your blood drive, is that all, is there an age restriction on donation, or what's?
18, I'm sure, I think a parent can sign off.
There's nothing on the top end.
No.
It's a good place to go.
You're still producing enough, Jim.
Well, thank you very much, Michael. We have a request for early graduation. Mr. Conrad.
Yeah, and I apologize, because I thought these letters from these students were a part of your board packet, but as I looked through, they were not. Basically, as those are going around, we have requests from three students that are currently juniors at Cedar Falls High School to graduate at the end of their junior year. Our board policy right now allows students to apply for early graduation at the end of the first semester of their senior year. And any exceptions to that, graduating earlier than that time, have to be approved by the board. Traditionally, our criteria is that we've always met with those students, as well as their parents, to ensure that it's a decision that is a consensus among their family, and they have a plan. And that's probably the biggest thing, that we want to make sure that there is a plan that those students have in place if they're going to graduate early. So you can see the three students, the first one is Ally Tybert. She has actually been accepted as a Rotary International Exchange student, and plans to go to France for next year to do that. The next student is Bethany Rollin. She actually is, wants to graduate early, and has been accepted to the University of Colorado and start her college career at that place. And the third one is a little bit maybe out of the ordinary, because he doesn't have a plan to actually enroll in a school next year, but he's an outstanding student that's taken a lot of honors and high-level classes while he's been here. He wants to finish his Eagle Scout project, and also then work until he finds exactly what his niche is. He doesn't want to have to waste any time in college, and feels that maybe he can enter the workforce a little bit prior to that time, and then make a more informed decision before he enrolls in college. And that's Bennett King. So we would recommend the approval of all three of these students graduating at the end of their junior year.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Doug, second?
Second.
Second, nice.
Do we do this as one, can we do this as one motion? All three have one motion.
So does this, does this go past Mr. Wedgberry first, and the guidance department? Or the council, school council?
Councils meet with the parents and the students, and then they also meet with Mr. Wedgberry. And then Mr. Wedgberry usually explains the process of having to write a request to the board, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this early graduation request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do they participate in the graduation ceremony?
Yes, they're allowed to participate as graduating seniors this year.
Hey, we've got an agenda item on facilities discussion. Would you lead that, Andy?
Sure. Yeah, we always, last several months on our facilities agenda item, and this is no different. We're certainly honored, appreciative of our community for passing the bond referendum on April 5th, and we're really excited about that. I know individuals who are on the board table certainly have put a lot of work into this, a lot of dedication into this, and we know it's going to be a direct benefit to our kids, which is very exciting. We have a lot of people that want to start moving dirt tomorrow. That's not going to happen, and I think everybody knows that, it's going to take time. We have a lot of work that's going to be upcoming, and we're hoping, over the course of the next several months, we'll have dirt moving, but it's going to take a while to get all those processes in place. The other piece is naming. We know we're going to have to name a new building. We want to get students involved with that, and that'll take a process too, but that'll be exciting to look at that, and certainly understand what that will entail, and as we move forward with that process, it's going to be exciting. Really, I'm here to help answer questions now that we have about facilities, the bond, and the referendum, and the successful referendum, and the plan and processes we move forward. Yes?
I've had two constituents suggest that we produce a video thanking the whole city of Cedar Falls. I was wondering if this is something possible.
Yes, that's something we've been working on, is a thank you video, different banners and other items, so we can say thank you to our community. Thank you from the bottom of our heart. This is tremendous for what they've provided for us.
Is it on Channel 15?
That's the whole, Channel 15. I'm not sure there was, I think, a correspondence about maybe a purchasing commercial or airtime as well. You know, the cost associated with that, we'll have to balance, but again, it's really an opportunity to just say thank you to all of our community and our constituents. It's a great idea, great suggestion. And we have some banners and other things that are going to go up, and certainly be very focal and at the center of our buildings.
Will there be work started on the two elementaries sooner?
Well, it's going to take time. With the drawings, with the different studies that we have to do, because there's different studies that are present, we still have public carings and all the bidding process and going through that stage. We have to make sure that we have the contracts in place for our design teams. We have to get our staff in place to start looking over some of those specifics with colors, and where the outlets are situated in rooms, and all that components. It probably won't take place certainly in the next six months, but hopefully later this fall, we can start that work. Certainly, we want to look at some kind of contract to maybe do some of the dirt work and some of the site preparation at the new elementary potentially this fall, but that's certainly very aggressive in a timeline, but hopefully we can beat some of the winter weather to get that accomplished as well. So we know we'll have three projects going on at the same time. That's going to be a lot of work, huge amount of dedication, but we know it's going to be for the students and their benefit, which is exciting.
And the goal for the new elementary is three years from this fall?
Well, we know it's going to be a good 18 to 30-month process, depending on all the project, or the timing of the projects. Best-case scenario, if we can start doing some dirt work this fall, we might go to be in there in the summer of '17-'18, which would be, again, about 22 months. And that would be aggressive, very aggressive, if the weather works out and cooperates with us.
And when does the, when does the property tax start? When will people see that on their first building? Is that connected with?
That, we'll have to have a bond sale first. And I have a meeting scheduled with the folks from Spear Financial next month to talk about that. Tentative plan would be to have a bond sale February, March of 2017. And then the tax implication for that would then take place for the 2017-18 school year. So we're looking, you just approved the 2016-17 budget tonight, so we're looking a whole year down the road before that will happen. And if you'll recall at our conversation at the board meeting last month, we talked about how we were going to stair-step certain things into it, that was part of that projection, and how we were going to work into it.
And then time, I know we don't have a timeframe of having renovations done at the elementaries, we don't know when we're starting, it looks six months. Do we think a year? Do we think longer than a year?
North Cedar's more complicated, just with the phasing and the additions on that building, so that's going to take, from start to finish, longer than Orchard Hill because of the amount of students to move around and some of the other challenges with just the site.
And North Cedar is the, monetarily is the smallest of the three projects, but it has a couple of unique logistical issues, and so it'll be the longest of the three projects. We are meeting with, we've met twice already with the design team. We meet again this week with the design team, and we hope to start banging out, or start putting a little concrete around the actual schedule. Right now, the schedule's a little up in the air, but we should be able to start pinning some of that stuff down here fairly shortly. Schedule is to follow when we would bid the projects, when the board would, we would take them to the board for approval, when we hold the public carings, when we hold award contracts, with the goal of really getting aggressive in the next spring. We hope to be able to do a grading project, a grading package, or a grading bid for the new elementary yet this summer, late summer, fall, excuse me. I'll know more on that one in about a month. We've got to work with, you know, the city of Cedar Falls, the property needs to be rezoned, we have a traffic study that we need to complete, environmental impact study, all those things, working with the developers in the area, and those meetings will be taking place here, starting in May.
Just lots of steps. So dirt won't be moving anytime in the next few weeks, it's going to be more.
Who comprises the design team?
Well, the contract for the design team will be presented to the board, hopefully at the next meeting. But assuming you approve that, there would be, structure architects would be the architect in conjunction with fielding the area international, working in tandem on that. Modus engineering will probably be doing some of the work, there's a structural engineer, civil engineer, Rick Gerstman, who's our supervisor of buildings and grounds, and myself, that's sort of the core group. And then as we sort of expand out from that, we involve, Pam will be involved with that, building principals will be involved with it, teaching staff will be involved with that as we sort of expand out and need more input from other people on different parts of the project.
So do we, is that a bid situation? So do we, is that a bid situation? So Structure bids on it and we have other architectural firms that will bid on it?
The board made a decision quite a while ago that Structure was going to be the lead architect for this project.
Okay. So how do we know what they're, and I'm just anticipating, so how do we know that what they bid is fair versus what we could get somewhere else?
I guess that'll be the business board's decision to make. I believe that the number that the builder presents to you is fair, but I also understand that when the board asked for an outside world leading architectural firm to be a part of this process, that did add a little bit of cost.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, and so again, my follow-up question is, I mean, I know we want to, you know, it sounds really cool to have, you know, a world international renowned firm, but at this stage, do we need to have that extra expense?
That would be up for this board to decide, but I'm following a direction of this board a couple of years ago when they directed us to move this, to go this way.
And I think going back to the question about fairness, I think it's pretty uniform what those costs are when you start talking with districts and there's not going to be any extremes when you start working with architectural firms. It's not going to be, Firm A is going to charge X percent and Firm B is going to charge a sizable less amount. Those are all very comparable for the services received. So we know that those are uniform and stay within that uniformity that we expect from all the bidding and requirements that are out there across the state.
But architectural firms typically charge a percentage of the whole project. Won't that be the case here as well?
Mm-hmm.
And we know that the cost of projects have exceeded inflation. I'm not sure the cost of developing plans has exceeded inflation.
I don't understand that question, I guess.
So we have facts that support that, for example, the cost of construction year over year has been increasing at a rate in excess of inflation. So I've heard 6%, 7% anyway. I'm not sure the cost of, as I say to my friends in architecture, drawing pretty pictures on paper has increased by seven or eight percent per year.
And you being into business, I know you understand that there's so much more involved than drawing pretty pictures.
And that's why I always say that with a smile on my face and great respect for what they do, yes.
With all the code requirements, with all the engineering design and all that work, that's all included within that packing because that's the expectation that the architectural firm works with that design team to make sure that it's done the right way. So when we have the building not only on paper but actually built, it's going to serve the needs and purposes that we expect it to serve for the lifetime of that building. So.
Right, and that's on one hand and the other hand is to balance the cost of what we're, and I'm not in favor of building anything that doesn't have 50-year life, so I'm not talking, I'm not talking about that. But what I am talking about is there's a lot of decisions that you can make in the design of a building that have a tremendous impact on the cost of construction, both the construction as it occurs there and then the long-term maintenance of that building. And so I guess I'm very sensitive to that and I want to ensure that the designs that we produce are balancing those, they're two opposites because if we put all the weight over here, we would get a building that was probably not meeting our functional requirements of what we need. And if we let this side win, we win awards for the architectural design because it's wonderful and it's beautiful, but we'd probably blow our bikes out of the water. And so what my concern is, is making a balance in between those as we're creating, as we're creating design because I want to make sure at the table, we have certainly the input from the people that are all using these facilities, but I want a very strong input as well as those who are going to pay for all of these facilities, both now and well into the future. And so that, I guess that's a lot of the point of my questions. And I would also, I would like to see an option that excludes Fielding Air from the design team and so that we know exactly how much that costs. What does it mean to have Fielding Air in the design picture? And, you know, what value does it bring? Because I think we've been, we've certainly gotten a lot of input from them. I'm sure Structure's got a tremendous amount of input from them, so tell me what you bring and tell me what you're going to cost to bring it.
That's going to be an interesting change from the work that we've done the last two years on some of the design, the development and the work on this. So that's going to certainly change from the work that has already gone into this because that's a challenge.
Well, everything we've done up to this point is conceptual, right?
We have conceptual drawings, yes.
Everything's conceptual. We haven't actually done any architectural drawings and we haven't actually, everything we've done is conceptual. Because that's what I've been told very, very consistently.
Yeah, it's conceptual.
It's all conceptual. So I don't see that there's going to be a great break. Wonderful, they've helped us create some conceptual drawings that helped us, give us an idea of where we'd like to go, but the hard work of actually coming up with the mechanical drawings and the electrical drawing and the, you know, all the components that go into that hasn't actually occurred. So I guess I'd like to see a proposal that excludes Fielding Air and one that includes it along with a description of what having Fielding Air in the proposal brings.
I would need the board to okay that because that's not the direction the board gave us two and a half years ago.
Okay, that'd be totally different than what we voted on previously.
With all due respect.
Oh, and that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be a change, a large change.
Last fall, we had 144 new students. Did you, did I catch how many new ones since last fall we've had?
We've had right around 16 new students.
And then we have proposed one new double portable. Any projections, if that's going to be enough to get us through the next two years? Are we faced with this decision next spring?
Probably. We will probably have additional portables that we will more than likely need before the construction's completed.
Andy, one of my questions is, do you suspect that we may need to, in anticipation of the last bond, we did an enrollment study, we did a boundary study. And then now knowing that the bond has passed and knowing that people will now know there will be a new elementary out there and knowing that the growth out there is already above what was expected and anticipating that once people know that, it may even be bigger, do we anticipate we may need to look at another boundary study because that have all, may have all changed out there?
Yes, that is where we would need to bring RSP back in to be able to do an enrollment study once again to find out what that enrollment, what it looked like and where those students would be living at. And we have said that that would occur about every two years, but the board made that decision now about a year ago to say we want to review our attendance boundaries roughly every two years.
And I knew that part, but I mean, now I would guess that now people are, know for sure there'll be a new school out there. I'm sure that area is going to go crazy.
So this fall, that is the hope, that we will be able to have them come back in, that they would be able to do their enrollment projection approach as well as where those students will more than likely be living at over the course of that five-year enrollment study. That way we can start deciding if those boundaries are realistic or if they need to be changed.
And this, and I don't know if you can answer this, so if they come back and houses aren't platted yet, but we know through planning and zoning or through developers that, you know, even though the study's happening right now, they know in 18 months, we're going to have 200 more houses platted. Do they work that?
They do.
So it's not just where, it's not current, it's?
Yes, they have a scientific approach, working with the city, the county and contractors to help determine number of future homes that will be purchased based on that formula of number of students per residential dwelling, I guess is the best way to put it, to be able to come up with a figure and a number. It's pretty in-depth with the process that they use.
Andy, when are, when will we engage the facility committee again? Will you bring that group back together and have kind of a similar conversation, just sharing the timelines for them because I'm guessing they're?
Yes, we're going to send an email out to them, but more than likely we won't have a meeting because there won't be anything concrete until probably, especially when we start looking at the summer. We talked about probably a mid to late August date with the facility committee, but just provide them the updates, the information before them so they know what, where and how, especially when it comes to some of the questions that are being asked, especially with that mindset, well, it's passed, let's start construction. It just takes more time than that. It takes quite a bit of work and we will get there and we'll be able to have some opportunities for their input and dialogue and discussion hopefully in August.
And this is a conversation for another time, but I loved the facts that were put out and I'm wondering if some of those would be helpful, you know, fact that we're not building next week and some of those factual things that could take place along the way that the community could educate themselves as we move forward in this process too, just in case they don't hear it from us or see it. We've had the bond.cfschools.org site. Is it potential to transition that into some type of an information site for this?
I think so.
And that way you could follow the construction and remodelings and so on too, maybe?
Yep, we've talked about that as well. You know, when at 1pm that could follow along with constructions and other components because that's important for people to see.
Money's being spent.
Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
A couple of different items. Number one, commencement, May 22nd at 1pm. We typically have two board members that are involved with commencement and we'd certainly love to have two volunteers that are willing to be there and hand out the diplomas. Don't have to decide tonight by any means, but.
I have some.
There we go, fantastic. So.
It's awesome to get to that.
It's neat, it's really neat. So I'll put down Mr. Ashman. Perfect. And again, we'll send out more details as that comes close, but again, plan on that date and you'll be up on the stage and typically split the diplomas in half, so we'll make sure that you get your child, that's important.
The second half of the alphabet. No, that's.
Retirement reception, number two, Wednesday, May 25th at Pheasant Ridge at 4pm. We can certainly invite and encourage all board members to attend. It's always a nice little reception where we honor the retirees for the district at that time. Always a fun, about an hour, hour and a half program, which is really see the years of service by all of our staff. April 25th, we have two informational reports, Leader and Me, Character Education. We also have Technology Update. Number four, the superintendent review, we need to get that done with a closed session. My hope is May 9th, I'll, we'll go to a closed session, knowing that the next meeting with the informational reports are going to be fairly lengthy. I also think we're going to have only six board members present at that time, so the hope would be May 9th, we go to a closed session and go into that review. And then open enrollment, number one, what I would like to do is bring back to the committee that looks at our policies, a sample policy that is done by some other districts. We don't have necessarily a timeline to be able to look at an open enrollment policy besides the fact it needs to be in place by next year, but this will certainly allow us to go through that process with our policy committee, review some of those aspects and move forward. We don't know who's on the policy committee. Yeah, that's why I went like that.
And Jenny, tonight, still aren't.
Would we do that before they can start, before the deadline for next year?
I would want to back that up even further to make sure we have that done, probably by midsummer, late summer, just with our normal policy review. We'll probably start looking at those in May with the 400 policy series, so the hope would be we'd be acted on and done by August.
And what's the, what is the date that?
March 1st, 2017.
Okay, gotcha.
And if you look at the open enrollment numbers, again, that we approved underneath the consent agenda, we had one, two, three, four, five, six students, every one of whom's continuous and we cannot eliminate and or limit continuous open enrollment for the district. And last month, we had five students that were on the open enrollment list and all five of those were continuous. So again, we're talking about a very, very small number of students, initially at six, so it's going to be those that we can't impact a lot of our students.
However, with, and not negating anything you just said, but for further clarification, we've struggled in the past because, you know, when Pam tries to do her planning, because of No Child Left Behind, it becomes very difficult to, you know, direct where maybe we do have a little bit of capacity. And this fall, do we gain a little bit more, a little bit more ability to influence, influence that so that if you've got classrooms that, you know, have an extra five spaces, you can direct it there and we're saving ourselves the expense, putting it off somewhat?
Yes and no. More guidance on May 9th, I believe, from the Department of Education at the state level, but the other, the other aspect, if school choice has been selected by a parent, we've already received that guidance, they have the option to continue with that school choice that they selected underneath No Child Left Behind.
So if they're there, they can stay there.
They can stay there. However, No Child Left Behind has been rewritten into ESSA. ESSA does not have a school choice component at this time as far as them going through the guidelines and expectations, so we know that it won't be offered into the future, at least the near future. So it's one of those students that took advantage of that issue if they so choose to continue.
Okay.
And part of that guidance Andy's talking about is we don't know if we have to provide transportation. They're doing away with the school choice option. They have to, they can stay through sixth grade, but we don't know if we have to provide transportation. That's one of the guidelines that's supposed to turn out.
And we used to have to provide transportation.
Correct. And right now, we just don't know. And we don't know if we don't provide transportation because the state says you can't spend your Title I dollars for that purpose, what that means for individuals that have made that school choice decision.
And just for one more clarification, those were all continuous if they had, if they moved and were considered continuous and the next year they have a sibling starting kindergarten, we could deny the sibling?
You can, but, you know, when we've looked at policies from other districts, that is something that's not done typically due to the fact that those students, you want to keep students together. So siblings can be according to the DE, but the continuous enrollment cannot.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments that concern the board members?
We, I do know, I was reading that the district won an award for their electronic newsletter and I think because of Chanel's hard work and dedication, that probably would have not happened, so I wanted just to make sure that publicly I acknowledged that since I asked her to send me the information and she didn't.
Thank you.
What a great piece of communication too. It goes out every two weeks to anybody that wants that and it's just packed full of information, which is tremendous.
I have one question and then I'll make one comment. Website, where do we stand on the new website?
Still a work in progress. In fact, we, I know we did some video clips today to make sure that that's going to be some of the backdrop and some of the rolling components of a new website. We have done some initial training with our administrators on some of the uploads and other work. The hope is we can come to the board, maybe even next month, be able to kind of showcase what that website's going to look like so we can get that rolled out soon. It's remarkable what it looks like. It's going to be tremendous communication piece for everybody in Cedar Falls and worldwide that wants to connect with us. It's just been a very large component to undertake, which we appreciate the people that are undertaking it, but it's just taking a little longer than we anticipated.
Remind me who's building now? Cohesit.
Cohesit, yes, thank you.
And then I'll just kind of give a quick report. Dr. Kenyon and I this week, was it this week? No, it was last Wednesday. I'm like, what is today? Last Wednesday, got to attend a mentors and violence prevention luncheon with our students. Last Wednesday, got to attend a mentors and violence prevention luncheon with our students and our counselor from the high school, Susan Langen from the high school and Gary Koonin from the high school. They brought all the 11 schools that are doing it in the state together, and it was a great opportunity to have all those students together. They kind of did some Think Alouds with the adults and students in the room, and so we got to hear a lot of different commentary from the students on the advantages they were seeing, the changes they'd seen in their schools, the challenges they were seeing within the program. And our very own Ally Tyber was the student that was chosen to address the group, so she spoke of a personal experience she went through, and I got some great car time with her and several of the other students as well as our staff, and it was great, I mean, a great way, sorry to throw that at Doug, but a great way to spend four hours talking to our students about not only that program, but, you know, our high school in general and some of our policies. And so, just, those are the kinds of things as a board member that really make it worthwhile is to have those opportunities to sit with those students. And they were students of varied backgrounds and varied, you know, they weren't just all our honor students. I mean, they had had personal experiences that directed them and they had learned from them and shared that, so such an impressive group of young people, and it was only six of them they were representing, but I know we have a lot more at the high school who are doing that. But a very interesting program, and it was interesting to have the governor there because that is something he's extremely supportive of, so he was there to commend the students and not address other things he's not quite as supportive of, but, so thank you for letting us attend with our students. That was, I mean, that's so valuable as a board member.
I might comment, this has been an initiative we've taken several years ago. We've had Harmony in the high school for many years, and this has sort of replaced that. The funding for this is directed to you and I, and they direct this program around the state. Said there were 20, there were 11 schools there this year, they hope to double that next year. And a great interaction and offering for the students each having a chance to speak and nice table discussion. And I might comment that Sioux City had three of their high schools there, and the guy that you and I that directs this had been affiliated with schools in Sioux City, and so they were extremely impressive, and so we were glad that we represented also. Any other comments from board members? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion? We're adjourned?
Somewhere.
A second? Move the second, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.